Roll call, please. Teresa.
Nelson.
Here.
Orison.
Here.
Larson. Wunschel.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Reed. Your fault.
Here.
Item three is the consent agenda. A is a motion to approve the city council minutes of July 5, 2022. Item B licenses, new Class C liquor license for 223, 225 Grand Avenue for Leanne Nahera, Mass Amigos pending approval by the Iowa Alcoholic Beverages Division. Item C is a motion to approve residential tax abatement application for Lori Balk, 1807 20th Avenue West. Item D is to a motion to approve FM Controls, Inc. as subcontractor for 2021 wastewater treatment plan improvement project phase two. Item E is a resolution to fix a date for a public hearing for August 1, 2022, 6:30 PM on proposal to enter into an amended sewer revenue loan and disbursement agreement and to borrow money thereunder in a principal amount not to exceed $3,271,000. Item F is a resolution authorizing permanent transfer of funds at 2021, 2022 fiscal year end as approved by the Finance Committee. G is a motion to approve the final change order to reflect as built quantities for 2021 West Fourth Street and 32nd Avenue West Storm Sewer Project. H is a resolution accepting work for 2021 West Fourth Street and 32nd Avenue West Storm Sewer Project. I is a resolution setting a hearing and directing publication of notice on a proposed text amendment to Title VI of the Spencer City Code by adopting a new Title VI, Chapter IV, Section 11 entitled Urban Chickens as Recommended by Planning and Zoning Commission. Hearing date, August 1, 2022, at 6:30 PM. J is a motion to approve the purchase of a used 1996 CAT 615 C2 elevating scraper for the landfill from Hoar Machinery, Peoria, Illinois for $135,000. This is a CIP item. K is a resolution authorizing and directing the temporary closing of portions of city alley between East Third Street and East Fourth Street east of Grand Avenue right-of-way for a distance of 93 feet in the city of Spencer as requested by Arts on Grand, July 29, 2022, from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM for a special event. And finally, L is a resolution to provide for a notice of hearing on proposed plans and specifications, form of contract, estimate of cost for the 2022 Spencer Library Roof Replacement Project. Hearing date, August 15, 2022, letting date, August 11, 2022. Motion made by Bill. Second by Donovan. Any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye.
Item four, we have a couple of public hearings. A is a public hearing on proposed amendment to Spencer Consolidated Urban Renewal Areas. I declare the public hearing now open. Any written comments against?
We have none.
Oral comments against? Any written comments in favor of?
We have none.
Oral comments in favor of? I declare the public hearing now closed. And item one is a resolution to declare necessity and establish an urban renewal area pursuant to Section 403.4 of the Code of Iowa and approve urban renewal plan amendment for Spencer Consolidated Urban Renewal Areas.
I'll make a motion on that, Mayor.
Motion made by Ron. Second by Tom. Any discussion? Brian, would you like to just comment on urban renewal areas and maybe you can fold all three of these items into the conversation here?
Sure, we can do that. So as the council may remember, well, going back one step before that, so the city has several urban renewal areas which are the basis for the TIF districts that we have. A TIF district can't survive without an urban renewal area. And so, any district that was created prior to 1995 has an unlimited lifespan. Those created after 1995, if it's set up for economic development, is limited to 20 years in life. We have, I'd say about a little over half of ours is in that pre-95, so it never expires. A lot of our south of town, so the 11th Avenue Southwest, Walmart corridor to Menards and all that area is the bulk of what's expiring now, it's 20 years, has surpassed as of the end of the fiscal year. And so, as the council remembers, about two months ago in that, we decertified and pulled out the Pine Tree Plaza parcel. So that's the old Staples building, soon to be home to TJ Maxx. And so, the action is, right now, is to put that parcel only. We're going to let, in consultation with the bond attorneys, we're going to let the rest of the parcel or the district expire at this point. And then, as we have development, we'll bring parcel in by parcel instead of starting the whole clock on the entire acreage of 20 years again. We'll just do it parcel by parcel to lengthen the span there. So this action tonight is declaring the necessity to reestablish an urban renewal area. We'll be bringing in the Pine Tree Plaza only. So that resets its base value. So now, its current value as of 1-1 of 22, I believe, becomes its base value. So then, we calculate increment on anything above that value. B is the ordinance that actually orders the county treasurer to divide taxes in accordance with the state. So, meaning that anything, taxes generated off that base value go to the original taxing entities. Anything off that increment is reverted to the city if we so desire for development purposes. And then, C is, as you know, we've discussed, we have a proposed development agreement with Bill Mueller for the development of the TJ Maxx parcel. That's setting the public hearing so we can have that and enter, potentially enter into that agreement in August meeting, so.
Brian, you make that sound so wonderful. Thank you very much. Certainly appreciate it. Anybody have any questions for Brian or discussion here on?
I know what you want to ask.
Good point. Okay. If there are none, please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye.
Okay. A2 is an ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the July 2022 addition of the Spencer Consolidated Urban Renewal Areas pursuant to Section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa. This is the first filing.
So moved.
Moved by Donovan. Second by Tom. Any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye.
A3 is a resolutions setting the?
Before you go on, we would ask that if the council's okay that at the next meeting, we would waive the rules and conduct the second and third filing to, on the ordinance, if the council's okay with that for next meeting.
Any objection on the, on this end? Think that's okay?
No, we'll just craft the agenda that way since it's mainly housekeeping to move that process along, so.
Okay. Thanks.
Sorry for the interruption.
Nope, nope. You're fine. You're fine. Okay. A3 is a resolution setting the date of meeting at which it is proposed to approve a development agreement with William J. Mueller Revocable Trust, including annual appropriation tax increment payments. The hearing date is August 1, 2022, at 6:30 PM. Motion made by Bill. Second by Brian. Any discussion?
Brian, will we, will we get a copy of that before the meeting so we can go through that?
Yeah, we'll send, we'll send it up.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye.
Okay. Item 4B, the second public hearing, is a public hearing on proposed resolution of necessity for the 2022 25th Street and 11th Avenue Southwest sewer extension project. I declare the public hearing now open. Any written comments against?
We have none.
Any oral comments against? Any written comments in favor of?
We have none, Mayor.
Any oral comments in favor of?
Here, here.
Okay. Anybody want to make any individual comments? If you do, the mic is yours at this time. Yes, and if you could give us your name and address, please?
I'm Bonnie Anderson, and I live at 2112 11th Avenue, right along 71. And we didn't know much about this. I heard some rumors, but nothing, you know, no petitions or anything came up our way until we get this letter in the mail saying now we can spend $16,000. And so, first of all, how much is this going to cost if, if we hooked onto it from the sewer line to our house? What is the normal, I know you can't give me an exact number, but how much does that cost?
We probably, our engineer would probably have a better idea than anybody on, anybody on this side of the thing. Ross, could you, could you speak to that maybe?
So I do, so is this an appropriate time to read some of my notes here, or?
I, I will defer to the city attorney. Is this okay at this point to, for Ross to talk about this, or it would probably be better when we get into the resolution?
For this information to be out, it may help some of the comments. So I'd say, let him go ahead.
Okay. Ross, you have the floor.
I don't want to speak out of turn, but.
No, I don't want to let you speak out of turn.
Okay. All right. So, so good evening. My name is Ross McQuarter. I'm an engineer with Cruz-Kate Nelson Engineering here in Spencer. We've been hired by the city council to prepare an assessment schedule and plat for the 2022 25th Street and 11th Avenue Southwest Sewer Extension. This project is located just north of 25th Street Southwest and just east of US Highway 71 in Spencer. The project was started after a petition signed by several residents along the project route was presented to the city for a new city sewer main. The proposed sanitary sewer will start at the existing Sixth Avenue Southwest right-of-way. Brian's got a map up here for everyone to kind of see. So the Sixth Avenue Southwest right-of-way, on the north side of 25th Street Southwest, and run west along the north side of those lots, over to the east side of the lots on the east side of Highway 71. The main will then turn north and go adjacent to those lots, up to the north side of Hagadore and subdivision, or up to 2020 11th Avenue Southwest is the address there. The sewer has been designed to serve the properties along the project route and future extensions to the north. Determinations of the assessments, we have been instructed to compute the amount of the project cost to be assessed to each property within the assessment district boundary. The schedule that was prepared lists the maximum dollar amount that can be assessed to each property located within the project boundary, shown on the assessment plat. City of Spencer policy calls for the properties abutting each side of the sewer main to pay for the cost to construct sewer main adequately sized to serve the properties, including a service connection to each lot along the way. City policy goes on to provide that the city will pay for any additional costs where the location or topography requires extra depth or increased pipe size to serve the project area or adjacent areas in the future. In addition, it has been the city's policy to pay for trench dewatering where required. The assessments shown were based on a total project budget of $557,000. The city has set a date for bids to be received if, if this hearing is successful, and that date is on July 28, 2022, at 3 o'clock. If, if successful tonight, then the project could be awarded at the August 1 meeting and contracts could be approved on August 15. The construction window, which, which we've tried to open up for the fall, you know, as soon as we can here, we also left it open to go to the spring so that we don't run up the bid cost by having a small construction window, I guess. So, so the construction window is really from, you know, the end of August to May 19, 2023. Upon completion of the project, we will recalculate the assessments based on the actual final project cost. It's a unit price contract, so the final cost of the project could be, can be expected to be somewhat different from the bid amount. A few other notes about the assessments. Assessment figures that were mailed to owners of record are the maximum amounts that can be levied for the project. The names and addresses for the properties were provided from Clay County's Geographical Information System database. When the assessments are levied, the property owners will have the option of paying the assessments off in full or paying the assessments in annual installments with simple interest over a 10-year term. Assessment installments can be transferred when the property is sold. Assessments cannot exceed 25% of the current value of the assessed property with the sewer in place. So this is why the 100% valuation, including the improvement, is shown on the schedule. The valuation is not used to compute the amount of the assessment. It is used to compare the 25% limit. All the properties on this schedule carry the assessments. So for tonight, passage of the resolution requires 75% of the council to vote affirmative. For the seven-person council, that would be six votes in favor of. And so, I guess, to answer the question, you know, for services, that'll, that'll really depend on the length of your service line from the sewer main to your house, and everybody's is a little different out there. If you're on Highway 71, it seems maybe like, it's maybe a little shorter than if you're on 25th Street. But I would say in general, I'd hate to throw out a price to, but I would say, you know, it could be looking $60 to $70 a foot for that service. So, probably $60 to $70 a foot. And that, that portion of the cost is not assessed. So, that's, that's correct. So the portion you're being assessed is the sewer main, and only the sewer main, and, and a service riser. So, that's correct. So, yeah, so, so, so the only thing assessed is the actual sewer main itself and the riser, your service riser. And the only thing that service riser does is, some of the main is up to 19 feet deep, so that brings it up to about six feet to the surface. And then, you can determine how, you know, how deep you need to be from there.
But from the, there to the house, that's?
That, yep, that's correct. So from the main to the house is the property owner's separate cost, so.
And so then the, but the, but, but the septic tanks then will have to be filled in with gravel? And how much, I, I know you can't give me a?
Sure. Yeah, and, yeah, and I would, I would.
And are we looking at a thousand dollars, or what?
I would say upfront, I'm not a contractor, and so I don't know exactly what that cost is. You know, I do know, like you say, that I believe the, the bottom has to be broke out of the bottom of the septic tank, and it has to be backfilled with, you know, the purview's aggregate probably, so that doesn't hold water, but.
If you don't want it, which we do, but if you don't, how long do you have to?
Sure. So by, so by city ordinance, I believe I have a copy here, you have, so after the sewer, after the sewer goes by, and if you have a, a septic system in working order, you have up to five years to connect to the, to the sewer main. After that five years, you can have an inspection done, and then, if, if your system is still in good working order and it is approved by the inspection, you can get another five years. So you can get up to 10 years if you have a good working system before you have to connect, so.
And so, we could be paying for that over that 10-year period without hooking up?
That, that's correct.
If the septic tank passes inspection?
That's correct. So, yeah, so because of the assessment policy, the assessments will start after the sewer main has been accepted by the city.
And if we wait 10 years to pay for it, then are we locked in at this price, or does that shoot out?
If, if you wait to install the service?
Yes.
I would say, if you wait to install the service, you're going to pay whatever price it costs in 10 years. Yeah, not today, so. It's also my understanding that there might be some grant money through the county to, to pay for that private service.
We, we have heard that, but I don't, I, I would be speaking out of turn if I said.
Maybe I shouldn't have brought that up.
Definitely is there.
I would say maybe that would be good to inquire about.
But, yes.
Comment on the grant. I already applied for a grant for a new septic. And it was approved, and the city, I talked to the city, and they did not want me to put my new septic system in, but the state agreed that they would do up to a certain dollar amount for hookup. However, I'm selling my house, so I lose the grant.
Okay. Yeah, and I would say, I would say going, going through the plumbing card notes, it looks like there's a lot of new systems out there, or newer systems. You know, even within the last 10 years, people have installed systems, but it's, it's a heavy soil, you know, I'm sure you, you pump your tanks. Sure, you have to update the system when you sold your house, sure.
So if I sell, I have to upgrade it?
I think you have to have an inspection.
I mean, mine's a perfect work. I emptied my concentrate, but I was told by someone in the city that the sanitation, the state, could give you an extension so I wouldn't have to replace it before I, when I sell. Does anybody? No, this, I was told, it was Kent, that they can get an extension.
Okay, thank you very much, Ross. Appreciate it. Okay. Are there any other comments in favor of? Yeah. And please state your name and address.
Jim Paulson. I live at 607 25th Street Southwest. And just a question, at the last meeting, we were here, we were showing a slide for assessment, and it was $5,700. And now we get this letter, and it's over $11,000. How do you explain that?
I think I talked to Ross, the cost came in at the piping, right, Ross? And we, with the inflation right now and the cost of diesel and stuff, because it's going to take a lot of, a lot of digging, and those equipment is run by diesel, and they're going down 19 feet into that. So, I mean, diesel costs went from $2.50 to $5, I mean, basically in that timeframe. And, and, right, Ross? I mean, that's kind of where we're explaining it?
Yeah, I'd say that there's, there's a couple, a couple things that play into that, that cost. Inflation, obviously, is one of them. Materials, fuel prices, labor, there's labor issues, you know, and, and guys are having to pay people more to, to work. So, so the estimated cost did go up after we reviewed the cost. You know, the other thing is too, with the, with the far, with the ag land, you know, it was determined that a portion of that ag land was going to be a duplicate main, and so some of those costs fall back into the rest of the parcels, so. Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. And I've talked to Kent quite a bit. You know, we've, we've been in conversation with him, you know, over easements and his assessments and everything else. So, yeah, I think he's on board, so. Oh, yeah, yeah. But, so, so with the assessments, his, his ag land gets assessed half of the cost, you know. So, so for the footage of the main, that his ag land is abutting, you know, that, that ag land sees the same assessments that you guys have. So, so, so he has, even, even, even after, even when we only count one side of the farmland, like we talked about, you know, we, we decided that the other, the other side was a duplicate side and wasn't beneficial to that land, he's, they still have a, a large assessment. And I think with his two parcels. That's correct. Yes. So, so he can, he can claim ag deferment with that, but as soon as they start to develop, they have to pay that cost. So, so even with the duplicate main theory that we've talked about, he's, he's still paying 30% of the project. City's picking up another 10%, you know, just in the preliminary assessment. So, between the ag land and the city, they're, you know, only 60% is actually going to the residential property owners. So, some of the additional costs that you saw, the difference in the numbers comes, comes from some of that ag land that we decided wasn't necessarily going to benefit from the assessment. You know, it's not, it's not going to benefit from the project. So, he's, the ag land still picks up a big, a large assessment, but if, but some of that cost got worked back into the schedule, to be fair to, to be fair to everybody, you know. Just, just the assessment policy, you know, we assess who's benefited, so.
Okay.
So that's, that's the difference in the numbers, so.
Okay. And, and Ross, I really appreciate your report on this. It, it, once again, affirms that engineers do a lot more than what we think they do, just digging in the dirt. So, you know state law and city code very well. Thank you.
Ellen Reitma, 711 25th Street Southwest. I've got a comment about how the, the special assessment is allotted. It, it seems to be done by the width of your lot. Is that correct? And what I saw. And I would suggest that every lot gets the same benefit from the, from the, the line. Not, you don't get a better, bigger benefit because you have a wider lot. So why wouldn't it be done by, by lot rather than by the width of your lot?
Well, we'll defer to Ross again. Go ahead. Yeah, yeah.
So, so, yeah, you know, it's, you know, that's, that's one way to look at it. The, the problem is, is so if, so if you have a big lot, it takes a lot more sewer main to get by your lot, you know. So the, so the cost to get by your lot is a lot more than your neighbor's if your lot is twice as big as your neighbor's, you know. So that's, that's really why the assessments are based on lot footage. And, and it's kind of the same deal, you know, when we talk, whether we talk about sewer mains or streets, you know, big lots in Spencer, you know, in the city are worth a lot more than probably a small lot, you know, so. With, with the, with the benefit of a large lot also kind of comes with some extra costs sometimes, so, you know, it's kinda unfortunately how this assessments are set up, so.
Okay.
Sure.
Uh, what about the streets, who pays for that? The street, actually?
Yep. Yeah, so, so that actually gets worked back into the schedule, so this, so the city, the city doesn't get assessed because the, they have city right-of-way. That, that cost actually just goes back in to the total cost, so.
Okay. Okay. Thank you again. Are there any other oral comments in favor of? Now would be your chance. Okay, thank you very much, and thank you again, Ross, for, for your comments.
I guess, am I supposed to comment here, or we discuss it later? But I wasn't quite getting the feeling whether some of those comments were in favor of or against. I know we were under the in favor of thing, and I kinda need to know, you know, I'm, I'm looking for you guys for information, you're the ones living out there, so.
Yeah, I, I think that, that Teresa actually decoded it, and, and got the comments that were noted against, or seemingly against, and some in, in favor. Okay.
This is what I have, if you wanna repeat it and see if the, the folks agree.
Okay. We have against Bonnie Anderson, and in favor of Jim Paulson and Ellen, Ellen Reitma. Is that correct? We wanna make sure that we've got it for the record. Okay. Now, Jim, are you opposed? Okay, Jim's opposed.
Got it.
Okay. All right. Nate, did you have? No, you, I haven't closed the, the hearing yet, so, so you're, you're fine.
Nate Ergens, 2124 11th Avenue Southwest. I guess I'm officially against.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, kinda like Bonnie, purchased the property, uh, two years ago in about a month, and knowing that they had a brand-new septic tank installed, so that's, I was kinda just going with that and was fine with it. And again, I just, uh, just want to mark some clarifications on this, so the, just to confirm, the, the total cost, mine's fourteen thousand, would be over ten years if I wanted it that way, with interest on that, and if I sold the property, it would transfer to the next owner.
Yes.
Okay. That's all good. And then the other thing I had a clarification on was the, um, so am I essentially paying for half of my footage with Kent paying the other half, or is that not an accurate assessment?
Ross, I see Ross coming to the mic.
So, so I would say, um, based on the policy, the benefit of property owners are paying for the, for the cost of the sewer minus the oversize and the depth. So, beans, we took out part of Kent's assessment, the ag land assessment, that goes back into the total cost of the project. So, so technically, you're not paying probably for half, you know? You may be paying for a little more because some of that cost is circled back in.
But Kent is paying something, though. I didn't know that, sure.
Kent's made a, he's made a, yes, he, even, even though he could defer, or he could use ag deferment, he's, he's paying a large portion of the cost, you know, like thirty percent of the assessed portion, so. So, yeah. Yeah, the ag land is definitely not off the hook by any means, so. I think so, yeah. And he's, and he's in favor, so that's, that's good, so.
Okay. Oh?
Is there other times to comment, or in favor of, or not in favor of?
No, this would, this, this is the time of the hearing, this would be your, your time to talk. Okay.
We are Ken and Stacy Mall, we live on 817 25th Street, 817 is our house number. We are very much for this project. We've lived there since nineteen ninety-eight, and we know that things don't work well because the ground is so heavy if we have a lot of water. It's been very dry the last couple of years, and, uh, with a high water table out there as there is, things don't work the greatest. And a lot of us aren't exactly what you call legal, as in a septic tank service.
Can you explain what you mean by don't work so well? Are you saying the leach doesn't, it doesn't leach out?
We don't even have a leach field.
Because we've had our house built a while now.
So, you have to have it pumped?
Well, we have to have it pumped, but we'll say the excess goes, I'm not gonna say where the excess goes.
I don't think I wanna know where the excess goes.
This is the way it was done years and years ago, and things have changed. So, if we would have to put in a septic tank, I'm guessing it would cost us ten to twelve thousand dollars if we would have to do it. And we purchased...
Twenty-five thousand?
Twenty-five. So...
So, this is a, a good investment in our property, so we'll go for it.
And, and if we sell our house, people, I'm assuming, would much rather have a house that is hooked up to a city sewer than a septic tank. So, I realize it's an investment, but it's an investment for the good of your property.
Okay.
And I'm pretty sure about ninety percent of the people over here feel the same way. Get up and tell, let them know.
Thanks, thank you. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I, I, I know a lot of the people over there have spoken to me in favor of this.
Lori Slaymaker, 2318 11th Avenue Southwest. I'm currently, once a month, having to have my septic pumped, uh, because the septic line that goes to the line that takes the sewer stuff away is gone. The tile is gone. And so my septic doesn't, doesn't empty. And yes, there's the grant, and we could have a new one made, but sometime, I would think in not the too far future, there will be development out there, as witnessed by the stuff across the, uh, section, and the different places with the new hotel and all that, those apartments and stuff coming in. I would think there'd be more, uh, development out there, and it seems, well, it should've been done a long time ago, but, you know, I've been here since ninety-eight also, and, and, uh, I, you know, just because I didn't, just because I didn't move in recently or something, I would've had to put in a new one too, but I didn't, I've been there forever, and now it's done, it's shot. And when I can't get it pumped, can you imagine? Would you like to do it? I don't have a spota potty, let's put it that way.
Thanks, Lori. Any other comments in favor of?
It's me again. Yeah, I would just like to say, yes, I, I was, my comments before were just about the assessment, but I am in favor of the, the project, and I think it's high time it be done. I don't think it's good to have all of us out there having our own septic system, their lots aren't that big, and I've seen what happens when somebody does put in a new septic system, and their yard is dug up for years, and everybody in that close a vicinity having their own septic and leach field, I don't think is very environmentally good, and I think it should've been done years ago. So, I'm in favor.
Thank you. And, oh, okay. I was going to say last call, but...
Terry Groon, 2306 11th Avenue Southwest. I think we made it really clear the first time we talked to all of you, that it, we feel it's kind of desperate at this point, but, um, we have already talked about the possibility of this going over your timeframe. There is no way that we could make it through the winter. We're measuring our garage to see if we can fit a porta-pot in there to get us by, which is totally asinine when we've lived here for forty-six years and been paying taxes. So, I just, you should know that we're feeling a little desperate, and we are definitely in favor.
Okay, thanks, Terry.
I just wanted to clarify that before, I'm not opposed to this, I was just questioning the assessment on it, so.
Okay, thanks, Jim. All right, now I will call for last call, for any comments in favor of. Okay. We have one more.
Joan Schwartz, live at 721 25th Street Southwest. There's a lot of septic tanks out there that are getting pretty old, older even than ours, and I know that it could be a problem. We are definitely in favor of it. We were kind of questioning when they did the, uh, line on the south side of 25th Street Southwest, and that whole line got it, and over on the highway, and nothing, we never heard anything about it. And I guess that's kinda what got this all going, is why we were having to wait so long, and that got done over there.
Okay.
So, we are in favor.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I declare the public hearing now closed. And, let me find my place. Item 4B1 is a resolution amending proposed schedule of assessments for the 2022 25th Street Southwest Sewer Extension Project.
Mayor, we only have to do that one if there's gonna be changes.
Oh, okay.
Otherwise, we can go right to the...
Oh, yeah, we can go to two.
Go right to the resolution necessity.
Okay, okay. I didn't have my arrow.
I didn't highlight it.
Yeah. No, I'm not gonna blame you for this, no. Two is a resolution of necessity for the 2022 25th Street and 11th Avenue Southwest Sewer Extension Project.
I'll make a motion on that.
Motion made by Ron.
Second.
Second by Lauren. Any discussion?
Oh, I'd just like to echo that this has been a positive for the citizens out there bringing it forward. I've been on the council for twenty ye, or eighteen years, and usually there's just a, a big force against it. I understand it should've been done years ago, I mean, it's just been one of those things that was a, really a tough thing. I know when you see these assessments, nobody wants to pay those kind of dollars. I, I get it for the people that, I mean, I feel terrible, but I know the ones that have been there a long time are understanding how serious it is. It will bring an easier value to sell your house. I mean, it, and, and they do need to have some se, or regular city sewer out there, and, and I'm sorry that it's taken us this long to get it there, so. I hope the rest of the council agrees.
I just wanna say that I appreciate all of you coming in and, and offering the support that you have. It makes this job up here a little bit easier, so it's appreciated.
Okay.
I have one comment.
Yeah, Lauren.
Timing is everything to these people, so, and I don't mean to put the, the nut, nut back on you, Ross, but is there any way that we can look at different ways to fast-forward this process? You've heard the sense of urgency here. And, and maybe that comes down to contractors and, and where they're at in the queue, and once it gets put out, but is there some way they can reprioritize maybe stuff that affects us, that makes this a higher priority?
You know, we've talked about that a little bit, and, and to, to try and help speed up the process, we have, uh, you know, set the bid letting for next week, instead of waiting until after the hearing, the plans and specs are out, you know, we're trying to get it moving as fast as we can. At the same time, when you put a constricted timeframe on a, you know, a public bid letting, especially when it goes out in July of the year, you can see an increase in prices pretty significantly, you know? So, I think when there's, when there's so many people involved, it's hard, it's hard to restrict that timeframe and, and push that extra cost onto everybody else involved. And I do understand that there are some, there are definitely some people in need of sewer. But I think, I think, um, after meeting with, you know, city staff, I think it's maybe, uh, you know, a common understanding that, you know, unfortunately, we do need to keep the timeframe open, uh, to keep the costs fair, you know?
Oh, go ahead.
Is there a good way to keep a, a channel of communication going with these folks as you go through that process?
Yeah.
Over and above here?
You bet.
So, they can keep a, you know, stay on top of it?
Yeah, I think, I believe Mark White has maybe started an email chain, um, you know, and we can take people's emails, anybody that's not on the chain, we could, we could take your email address and get you added if you're not on it. And we can, you know, we can continue to update you on the time schedule. Once we get a contractor, which would be, um, August 1st, we'll award a contract, you know, then we can have some good communication with them and see what their schedule is. I have talked to three or four contractors, I'd say, and I'd say three out of those four had, had room in their schedule this fall, um, you know, one of them was a, was a next spring, but, um, so, you know, there's, there's a good possibility that the work will get done, you know, before, before the dead of winter, you know, so.
Excellent, thanks, Ross.
And one of the things, Ross, and you can correct me if I'm wrong here, and I'm sure you will, but that if we had not expedited this process, the bid letting would've probably been much later, would've been into September, correct?
Yeah.
And that would've made it much more difficult to get, even have a semblance of a possibility to get this project done this fall.
That's right.
And, and a lot of this is gonna be determined by weather as well, I would think.
Yeah, you know, and we, we talked about the little bit at a couple of meetings we had, you know, if, if, if we had a bid letting in late August, you know, you're looking at, you know, approving contracts sometime in September, you know, and contractors won't start ordering materials until after their contracts approved, so, um, I've heard there could be six-day week waits for materials, whether it's, you know, pipe or concrete manholes, so, so that, so there is, there is some benefit to getting this project moving, you know, so, um, you know, once we have a contractor, we'll know a lot more, so.
The crop, the crop that's in there isn't part of this equation? I mean...
It's not, in, in...
It won't stop, it won't have to wait till the crops harvested, anything like that?
It, it doesn't have to. We have, we have crop damage written in the easement agreement, so if, you know, if somebody wants to come in and start it before the crops come out, it's set up for that.
Ross, may I ask a question regarding, I know that Mrs. Anderson asked a question about cost of getting from their home to this pipe. Is there a process, a preferred process? We've got twenty-some property owners here that are systematically going to be, some of them wanna get on right now, and some of them may not. Is there a process that you can control to help them expedite those who really want it versus those who wanna put it off?
Yeah.
And how do you do that?
I guess, I would, they're gonna have to have a permit, um, so I would, I would refer them to Mr. White or city staff to get them started. And I, I imagine you have a list of local contractors who do, uh, service work, um, and, yeah, they could probably get this estimates going soon, I would think, so.
Because you know where the pipe's gonna go, so they...
That's correct.
They know exactly where they're gonna, where the end point is.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Any other comments, discussion? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Oris, aye. One shall aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye.
Item, item three is a resolution directing the city clerk to file certified copies of the resolution of necessity and preliminary plat and schedule of assessments with the county treasurer of Clay County, and ratifying the preparation of detailed plans, specifications, notice of hearing, notice to bidders, and form of contracts for 2022 25th Street and 11th Avenue Southwest Sewer Extension Project. Hearing date on plans and specs is August 1, 2022, letting date July 28, 2022.
So, move.
Moved by Lauren. Second by Tom. Gotcha. Any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Oris, aye. One shall aye. Hanson, aye. Nelson, aye. Oris, an aye. One shall, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye.
Item five, old business, A, is an ordinance amending Title 8, Chapter 1, Section 1 of the Spencer City Code concerning construction permits, this is the final filing. Motion made by Bill.
I'll second it.
Second by Ron, any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Oris, an aye. One shall, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye.
B is an ordinance amending Title 1, Chapter 7 of the Spencer City Code to adopt a new Title 1, Chapter 7, Article F concerning the deputy city clerk and making technical revisions to permit one individual to serve as deputy city manager, finance officer, and city clerk, this is the second filing. Motion made by Brian. Second by Donovan, any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Oris, an aye. One shall, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye.
Item B1 is to waive the final filing and proceed to final consideration. Motion made by Donovan. Second by Lauren, any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Oris, an aye. One shall, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye.
And, item.
We're on number two, B2.
Okay. Is an ordinance amending Title 1, Chapter 7 of the Spencer City Code to adopt a new title, Chapter 7, Article F concerning the deputy city clerk and making technical revisions to permit one individual to serve as deputy city manager, finance officer, and city clerk, this is the final filing. Motion made by Brian. Second by Bill, any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Oris, an aye. One shall, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye.
Item three is a resolution appointing Brian Weave as city clerk of the city of Spencer, Iowa, effective August 1, 2022.
I'll make a motion on that.
Motion made by Ron.
I just asked him, so I'll second it.
Okay, I'll give you the, the second, okay.
Does he have to have majority vote here?
Well, there is, this is the point for discussion Donovan, so.
Well, do we have to fire him first and then rehire him on August 1st, or?
I know him, I can't vote.
Well, I know it's a tough decision.
Sorry Brian.
Please vote by machine.
Made it. Nelson, aye. Oris, an aye. One shall, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye.
By the skin of his teeth. Item C is an ordinance amending Title 7, Chapter 8 of the Spencer City Code by adopting provisions regulating the operation of electric stand-up scooters, this is the second filing. Motion made by Donovan.
I will second.
Second by Brian, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I've received a couple of phone calls about this, and the two calls that I received are both in favor of. Individuals are pretty excited about it, I also had an opportunity to speak with Chief Warburton before tonight's meeting, and he assured me that as of right now, he's comfortable with it as well. And if an issue arises, we can certainly take advantage of the thirty-day notice that we have with Bird, so.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sure this has been covered, and I'm quite sure we talked about it, but there's a former Spencer resident whose son just took a spill on one of these, and it's very grave. So, I want to make sure that we have our Ts crossed and our Is dotted on this thing, because it's a very sad situation there.
Yeah, I know the situation you're referring to, and I agree, it, it is a very, very sad situation that occurred last week. And, this is the second filing, so, do your due diligence if you have any questions about it. But with that, please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Oris, an aye. One shall, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye.
Item six, new business, A is to take action to verify condominium declaration by the planning director for property owned by Tom Snyder and Susan Johnson in the 1900 block of West 11th Street. Motion made by Bill. Second by Donovan, any discussion?
Alec, I know I read it, and it, it makes sense to me, but I don't know if you need to do a brief description.
Yeah, not a problem. So, this property is going from rental to they're going to condo it out and sell the individual units for people to live in. The property is zone, is zoned B multifamily, so it is designed to hold our higher-density housing properties. So, as far as zoning goes, the use of that property, I see no issue with it. I wrote the letter there, sent it into them, similar to how we other do, we do other zoning verifications. The attorney wanted it to be verified by council action. That's why we're here.
Any questions for Alec?
Does this go through the planning and zoning board too?
No, we didn't bring it, no, straight to, straight to council.
And, and you might not want to go far, because you'll probably be up for the next one.
Yep.
Okay, alright. Any other comments, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. B is a motion to approve the proposal from Snyder and Associates for Green Industrial Center floodplain feasibility study, task one, as approved by the finance committee. So, Alec, I'm glad you stayed.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Motion made by Bill and second by Ron?
Nope.
Lauren.
Lauren, okay, I knew it was to the left, okay. Okay, Alec, can you explain what this proposal with regard to Snyder and company is?
Yeah. So, in November here of twenty twenty-two, or yeah, twenty twenty-two, or twenty twenty-one, sorry. This is your new flood map that kind of affects, well, absolutely affects your green industrial park currently. Come November of this next month, the results of the pre, of the previous study that we did on the park will expand that and make it a little bit more unfriendly. So what we've kind of met with staff, met with residents of Spencer, and, you know, talked about this area, is that we're trying to see what we can do to shrink that. One of those things is to do a better study of the, where the water goes in Spencer, and try and explain that to FEMA. To do that, we need folks like Snyder to come in, take a look at our GIS data, and where all of our storm sewer and everything goes, to try and alleviate how much water actually hits that ditch or creek. It's actually named Muddy, Muddy Creek Tributary, if you were wondering. Back when the study was first happening, they did give us a few options to, to shrink that, shrink that floodplain-infected area, and those options were a little unfeasible at this time, because they included basically creating a new river back there. For, for this study itself however, there's a few tasks that are outlined within it. Each task is designed to try and take a better chunk out of what that blue affected area will be. As, as we go through it, if it seems like those, that our efforts are not bearing fruit, we can, we can pull back and not pursue any of the tasks. We have spoke with SMU Utilities and Iowa Lakes Electric, who are on board and assisting in kind of a split for, for this project as well. SMU for, for, for the project itself entirely. Iowa Lakes wants to take it a step at a time before committing to the next step, they want to see the results. So at this time, it'd be taking on that first task, taking a look at some of the information we have, speaking with representatives and seeing how, how much do we actually want to try and shrink this thing? In a perfect world, you know, all of it be gone. But we're going to try and see what, what that would actually take, based on the data, so.
Any questions for Alec on this?
Mr. Mayor, I think we did a, Alec did a great job explaining this at the finance committee meeting. This task one, I believe, is five?
Five thousand dollars, yep.
Sixteen hundred dollars to me seems like a very small investment to figure out a way of shrinking that blue area. I was surprised when he, when Alec gave the presentation, if we all remember back when this whole floodplain issue became an issue, we, we, I think we're all under the assumption that that blue area is coming from the Blue Sioux, you know, Cheaton, going up and water going backwards. That's not the case, this is water going the other direction, basically going down that blue line you see running through the green industrial park. And I just think, we've got, we've got to keep moving through that, because it's quite obvious that FEMA is not using the information that we know has happened in Spencer. I made the comment, I've lived close to that blue line for forty-six years. And I think Mark had one time, we've had barricades on 10th Avenue, and they were there for a few hours and that was it. And that's in forty-six years, so. I, I just think it makes a whole lot of sense, let's take the first step, and to me, we're probably going to go through two or three. Because one of the things we've got to realize is that all that blue area is our green industrial park, and we can't do anything with that unless we get this thing figured out.
Plus a lot more.
Anyone else? Any other comments?
I just wanted to echo what Bill said on the presentation that Alec put together on it, and was involved in some of the earlier discussions with the DNR people on it, so. And we got all that infrastructure, and we have new business getting ready to go in out there, so. To market and move that property out there, we need to keep, this is a very no-brainer type investment. Thanks Alec.
Yeah. Very good job Alec, and, and I agree with both Lauren and Bill's comments, I couldn't add to those.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Brian.
I also would echo Bill's comments. However, due to some personal interest in developing potentially in the green industrial zone, I'm going to be abstaining from this evening's vote.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Item seven, engineers' report. Welcome back Ross.
Could be tired hearing me talk. I just have a really brief update, out on the West Leech Park boat ramp, the river levels were elevated last week. Did come down a long ways over the weekend, hopefully by the end of the week, they'll be back to work there. On the Fourth Street overlay project, pillar construction completed the concrete work last Thursday. They've been working on getting things cleaned up, and they were also here working on punch list items today. So, so concrete work's done on that project now. The seating dates don't open until August 10th through the DOT, so we're looking at about a month here before we get it seated and hydromulched. And then we'll work on getting that project closed out. The rocket slide, the sidewalks have been constructed on the project. The contractor has a little cleanup work to do, and they need to place the cap on the slide. Jim says that the rubber mulch that's going to be placed is under a separate contract. Out at the airport, the contractor continues to work on the interior and exterior of the building of the terminal, the terminal building. And then at the PD parking lot, diamond concrete finished backfilling the pavements last week. They also graded the new green space located on the south side of the parking lot. Seating on that job will take place in the middle of August, unless they get the sprinkler system up and going, then we'll get it seated earlier. That's all I have, unless you have questions.
Does that complete that project then?
It does, yep.
Okay, thanks Ross. Item eight is the city managers' report, there won't be a city managers' report tonight. Dan's not here, obviously, he's dealing with a recent death in his family, and our thoughts and prayers are with Dan and his family. Under the mayor's report, I just have one item, and it's with great sadness that I announce that this is the last city council meeting that Teresa Riordan, to my left, will be attending in an official capacity. She may come back and visit us.
No.
Maybe not, maybe not, I don't know, but Teresa. Teresa is retiring at the end of this month, after forty years of service to the city of Spencer. And I think she embodies what it is to be a public servant. She is a tireless worker, she's an advocate for the city, and to me, she, she has been so trusted to me and helpful to me as mayor, and also in the sixteen years that I served on the city council. So, it's, with that, with sadness, but congratulations, congratulations Teresa, on your retirement, well deserved.
Thank you. And then I'll just step over and.
Yes, and you'll, you'll hand it over to Mary Beth.
That's right.
And Mary Beth was here last, two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay. Item 10, council and committee reports. Upcoming meetings, we have a committee of the whole meeting on July 25, 2022, at 5:00 PM. And the council will be taking a tour of the wastewater treatment plant and the landfill. Yeah, I, I hope you enjoy that, I will not be present for that, but I'll be thinking of you.
They told me it wasn't optional.
It's, well, it wasn't optional for you Donovan, that, that's, that was, that was the deal, okay. And then there's the regular city council meeting on August 1, 2022, at 6:30. And I don't think we have any others.
We scheduled the personnel committee.
Personnel committee on, that's July 21 at 5:00 PM this Thursday.
Right.
Okay, exactly, okay. Item 11, entertain a motion to approve the bills and claims. Motion made by Bill.
And there are an additional sheet in front of you as well.
Okay. Second by Brian, all in favor, or any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Item 12, other business opportunity to address, to address the council. And please state your name and address, please.
My name is Jimmy Liasson, I live at 202 Russell Street in Storm Lake, and I thank the honorable mayor and council for the opportunity to say a few words. I'm here for a couple of reasons, one is to introduce myself, because I'm running for Iowa House of Representatives. And I'm impressed by the amount of civic engagement I'm seeing here. I've been to many city council meetings in Storm Lake, and I almost never had this, this level of engagement. And the second reason for coming was to see what's going on in Spencer, and I see quite a lot. And again, I'm impressed by the amount of civic engagement. And also to see if there's anything that the state government can do better or less of, or, or more of. And because, you know, laws are there to protect people from having your rights trampled on by citizens and corporations, and, but sometimes they may go too far, and I want to make the pledge that if elected, please, please call me if you think a, a rule or regulation has gone too far, and I'll look into it and either tell you why it's needed or sponsor a bill to overturn it, because in many cases, the statutes are rather vague. Because in many cases, the statutes are rather vague, and it's left to the executive branch to actually write the regulations to implement it. And sometimes those regulations are not written in the spirit which the law was passed. And so it's up to the legislature to, to overturn that if they, if they so choose. Anyway, I'm not here to give a long speech. I just want to let you know that I'm running for Iowa House, and I'll be available after the meeting for anyone who wishes to ask me any questions. Thanks again for the opportunity to address the council today.
Anyone else? If not, try to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Donovan. Second by Tom. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, Teresa. You kept me on task tonight.
Yes, thank you.
I was all-